All right Chairman, we're ready.
Got it. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the Bolton Board in the Municipal Building. Notice made available to the Township Clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star Ledger. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Reggio?
Here.
Mr. Blount? Mr. Ali?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you hear me? Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there are quite a few changes. Anybody here on the Santiago application on Birchwood Drive? That is adjourned until October 12th with no further notice by the applicant. Anyone here on the Rivera application on Oxford Street? That is adjourned until September 28th with no further notice by the applicant. Anyone here on the Bradshaw application on Quincy Street? That is adjourned until October 26th with no further notice. And finally, anyone here on N B A D one on Parker on Park Avenue? That is adjourned until October 26th with no further notice. So the only notice you're receiving on those applications is my announcement here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Caneley. Let's move on to item number five, twenty-three dash Z B dash seventy-five V. Amelita Gutierrez?
Yes, this is she. Yes, I'm Amelita Gutierrez.
Hey Ms. Gutierrez, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Your address, please?
Sixty-seven Anita Drive, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here?
Well, uh, we're applying for a fence in our property and I understand this is a variance application because it's, uh, the easement is gonna be affected.
And you understand that if access to the easement is ever necessary, you would be responsible for removing that fence and shed at your own cost?
Yes, I have some questions on that. What are examples of repairs or maintenance or anything?
There's generally not maintenance involved. It's just whether or not something in the easement breaks and they need to get, to dig it up and fix it.
What, what would be examples of, you know, that they have to, to repair or...
Henry, do we know what kind of easement this is?
I believe it's a utility easement. Uh, not a hundred percent sure to be honest with you.
So Ms. Gutierrez, if it's a utility easement, that means there may be underground wires running? And if one of those wires were to break, they might have to dig up the land to fix that. It's very unlikely. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen.
Uh, can I ask another question?
Sure.
When was the last time that it was repaired or fixed or...
We don't have that information.
No, we don't know that. I don't believe ever, but again, it's not information that the board has. Most likely it's an easement for either stormwater management pipes or sewer versus, you know, any other utility. So again, the, the chances that something goes wrong is probably slim, but it's always a possibility. And if you want to place those items in the easement, you have to be aware that, um, you know, and if we do need to access those easements, uh, all costs would be your, your responsibility to remove and replace those items.
Okay, how, how much notice do I have to? Do you have to let me know how long before?
The township would let you know and give you notice.
Okay.
Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions about this application? Hearing none, I'd like to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Uh, close the public portion and I'd make a motion to approve this application.
I'll take a second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Did Mr. Blount show up? Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Gutierrez, your application has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting. You don't need to be present for that. We will mail that document to you.
Okay, so I have to wait for that document before I can start, right?
Yes.
Do I have to, um, apply again? Or is there any, anything that I need to do after this? For the fencing, the, the contractor, do they have to...
You would have, you would, you would have to reapply for a zoning permit. I imagine you applied at one time and it was denied because you needed the variance. So you'll have to reapply for a zoning permit for the fence, um, in, in order to put the fence up.
Okay.
Is the shed, the sheds existing, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you would need the zoning permit for the, the new fence that you're proposing to put in.
Okay.
Thank you ma'am. Good luck. Let's move on to item number six, twenty-three dash Z B dash seventy-seven V. Catherine Ridsi?
Thank you too.
Thank you ma'am. Have a good night. Hi Catherine.
Hi, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Catherine Ridsi, thirteen Deborah Drive, Piscataway.
Thank you. Could you explain what you'd like to do here?
We are seeking a variance to put a shed in our backyard.
Mr. Hinterstein, do you have any comments on this? You're muted.
I believe the comments on this one are the same as this previous application we just heard. That I, I believe the shed is, actually this shed, um, is a little bit, this one's a little bit different. It's nine feet is allowed and I think this shed's ten point six seven feet. Um, let me just double check.
Yes, it is a little bit tall and we have an undersized lot by a little bit.
Yeah, the undersized lot is an incorrectable item. Uh, it was developed like that. I don't have any issues. There's no coverage variances required for this application. It's really more just the fact that, um, the lot was developed in that manner. So, um, I, I just believe that the height variance being requested is de minimis at best. It's about a foot over. So I don't see any issues with this application.
Okay, Catherine, you're okay with the, um, the language about the easement?
Uh, there's no easement here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where was I reading? I apologize. All right. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna close it and I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. I'm gonna close the public portion and make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second? Please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? Calpech unmute. Thank you. Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Ridsi, you have been granted your variance. You will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that document to you. You'll need that to get your permits.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Can I exit the Zoom call?
Yes.
Yes, you're all done.
Good evening.
Let's move on to item number eight, twenty-three dash Z B dash forty-seven V. Leanna Kamadis?
Kamadis, yep.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Ma'am, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Name is Leanna Kamadis. The address of the proposed lot is two thirty-one Highland Ave.
Oh, thank you. And could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
Yep, we're seeking a variance to build, um, a small home on an undersized lot. Um, I'm looking for a small home for me and my son. My dad is a contractor. We found this vacant lot through living locally. My family all lives in Piscataway and my son goes to Piscataway school. So we thought this lot would be perfect to build a small home on. After Jonathan completed, so we have a proposed plan that we completed. After Jonathan, the surveyor completed the survey, showed the area on the lot where I could build. I asked my dad and the architect Paul to design something that would fit in with the neighborhood and on the lot. They helped show where the survey, on the survey where the house would be placed. I also noted where the driveway sidewalk and the utility lines are anticipated to be placed. Told Jonathan to put the red lines on the survey so the board could see my proposal. If the application is approved, I'll make sure that construction plans are submitted to the Construction Department for approval.
Uh, Jim, just, um, by way of, uh, background, um, technically speaking, um, Leanna is represented by counsel and I do have a professional planner, uh, here to testify as to the C variances. And also I have the surveyor and the, um, the designer here to answer any questions if the board has any.
Um, I'd like to have Mr. Hinterstein address the, uh, the application if we could, his comments.
Um, yeah. This applicant's been before us previously. Um, at that time, the, the, um, the, the plans that were submitted were a little bit, um, you know, a little bit intense for the lot. I think the, the applicant took the plans, went back and sort of, uh, gave it a, you know, another go at it and revised the plans. Uh, we reviewed those revised plans and, and they, they made a great effort to get them a little bit less intense. Uh, I think they brought the roof line down a little bit. Or maybe that was the one thing that, uh, wasn't a hundred percent addressed. But they did address a lot of the concerns that we had, I believe, on the first, uh, submission of the plans. Uh, I believe that the, the comments that remain now, we're just trying to bring the roof line down to about twenty-eight feet. I'm just confirming that that would be possible. Um, and that again, as, as the applicant had stated, that they would bring in, um, construction plans that show all the required, uh, items, uh, for a single-family home. And they were outlined in the, uh, in the staff report. Uh, but at, at this time, I, I would definitely like to hear the, the planner's testimony just to justify the, the variances that was on the record.
Okay, uh, thank you so much. Um, I have Glenn Patterson here, professional planner, if you want to swear him in.
Mr. Patterson, could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Where the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
So Glenn, can you just very briefly, um, give the board the benefit of your educational background and professional experience?
Sure. Uh, I have a bachelor's degree from American University and a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers State University. I'm a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Member, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners that have testified in front of various boards in the area, including Highland Park, Milltown.
Mr. Patterson, I'm, I'm happy with your, your credentials. Very well, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, so Glenn, why don't you just, uh, tell the board, um, what the basis is, uh, supporting the, um, the C variances, which as noted by Mr. Hinterstein, um, consists now of the lot area, lot width and lot frontage. Um, and then just by way of, of clarification, and if you would prefer that, um, Mr. Rodeck testify as to the garage measurements from the inside are in fact twelve feet by twenty feet, which do meet the ordinance requirements. Um, there is a step located within the twelve by twenty-foot area. However, under your ordinance, it does note that, um, uh, as far as I can, I can tell, that does not interfere with the vehicle and therefore would not technically be a variance. But I would defer obviously to Mr. Hinterstein and the board's preference and Mr. Patterson's testimony. So I'm sorry with that. Please go ahead Glenn, if you don't mind.
Okay. Sure. Um, the property is an isolated vacant fifty by one hundred lot in the R-ten zone. Uh, a single-family three-bedroom house with two parking spaces is proposed. This is a permitted use and the parking requirement is met. Um, as Westlake has just reviewed, uh, the variances that are being requested, lot size, lot width, lot frontage and possibly the parking space stall dimensions. Uh, the proposal meets all of the township's standards for setbacks, height and coverage. This demonstrates that the proposal addresses all of the traditional concerns regarding zoning, such as providing adequate light air and open space. Regarding the, uh, lot dimension variances, I'll cover them all together since they're all related. The title report, uh, that the board, uh, has as part of the application package, found that this fifty by one hundred lot has been on the tax map since nineteen twenty-two. This predates zoning and it's a legal non-conforming lot. The lots on the block face alternate between fifty and a hundred, uh, lots and one hundred by one hundred lots. The pattern's repeated on the adjoining block fronting on Park Avenue. This evidences that the original layout of the lots in the neighborhood included these fifty by one hundred lots. Now, the basis for granting a variance, uh, for an undersized lot comes from the Dalmyer v. Lacy case, which set forth a, uh, four-part test for analyzing development on an isolated undersized lot. The first part of that test was whether an effort was made to bring the lots into conformance. And the answer is, is yes. The adjoining lots are previously developed on one hundred by one hundred lots and not available for acquisition or merger. The staff report notes that a partial subdivision of the adjoining lots cannot be done without creating undersized conditions on the adjoining lots. The subject lot was listed, uh, publicly for sale for about four years. Google Street View Photography, which I viewed, showed that a for-sale sign was on the lot dating back to, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, again, in, uh, twenty twenty-one, Google did another Street View pass by and, uh, the for-sale sign was still there at the, at that time. The for-sale signs were on the property as recently as this past spring when the applicant became the contract person purchaser. The adjoining, uh, property owners did not offer to purchase, uh, a lot to remove the, uh, the non-conformity through merger. The second part of the test is have plans been submitted that describe the project's appearance and compliance with, uh, building codes? Again, the answer is yes. The board has the plans and they demonstrate that the proposal is for permitted use, that is modest in scope and in character with the other development in the neighborhood. The structure will meet all the applicable building codes. The third part of the test is does the proposal attempt to comply with other standards of the zoning ordinance? Again, the answer is yes. All the yard setbacks, building coverages and height meet the standards set by the township. The use is permitted. And finally, the fourth part of the test is does the proposal satisfy the traditional criteria of zoning? Again, the answer is yes. The proposal does not violate any traditional zoning purpose such as light air and open space. The municipal land use law sets forth the purposes of zoning and purpose C is to provide adequate light air and open space. The township has adopted disverbatim as a purpose in its zoning ordinance. And the township has then set standards in the R-ten zone to provide adequate light air and open space by creating setback, coverage and height standards. The project meets or exceeds all of these standards. All the setbacks are met, all the building codes are met and the use is permitted. A lot variance can be granted on a C-one hardship basis. The lot, the adjoining lots are previously developed. The subject lot was publicly listed for sale. The adjoining owners did not offer to purchase the lot to remove the non-conformity through merger. The applicant cannot make the lot compliant with the area and with requirements. This makes the lot development impractical without variance relief. I just want to, uh, clarify as to whether, um, the, um, the garage, um, parking space dimension is a, a variance or whether we have, uh, complied with that as the, um, space is twelve by twenty.
Can you confirm Glenn that, uh, it appears on the plan that there was one step? Is, or maybe, maybe Paul can answer that.
There, there is one step in there, but as, uh, Ms. Westlake was saying, uh, we read the, uh, the ordinance. It said if it impeded, uh, the parking of the vehicle.
And I, and I agree that won't impede that if it's just one step. I just wanted to confirm that that's the plan. Again, because there really isn't any engineering plans. You know, even two steps, I don't feel really will impede that. But depending on, again, we don't have garage floor elevations, first floor elevations. I, I think as long as two steps are maintained, uh, in the garage, I agree. I don't think a variance is required and I don't, I don't think there's any issue. There, there won't be any impedance to that, to that overall garage dimension.
Perhaps Mr. Rodeck could, uh, um, opine on that?
Yes.
We, you might want to swear him in.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Rodeck, can you raise your right hand? Where the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Paul Rodeck, four Henrietta Street, East Brunswick, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Paul, can you just, uh, clarify that, um, for the board, that you are the, in fact, the, uh, drafter of these plans? And then speak Mr. Hinterstein's question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, um, you, you will be the, uh, person involved in developing the construction plans?
Correct.
Okay, so you're, uh, is it fair to say you're confident that it will be limited to one to two steps from the garage?
So the garage, so two things with the garage. There will be two steps in the garage and also we intentionally moved the garage door over. We offset it from the center to the right. If you look at the plan so that the steps are on the left, so it allows even more room. If you pull the car in with even two steps, there's more space there to allow for easy clearance to get in and up and down those steps and still access in and out of the car.
Okay.
In a twelve-foot wide garage.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other members of the board have any questions?
Um, as I put, I, I can also do an analysis to, uh, say the project supports this on a C-two flexible C analysis. Also, if, uh, the board wishes to, uh, to hear that or if you want to move on.
I, I think we can move on. Uh, speaking on behalf of the board, I think we've heard the testimony at this point. Um, any other members have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant does need to address Henry's comments about the building height.
Oh, I thought that that was addressed. I'm sorry.
That was not.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, if you wouldn't mind, Paul, could you speak to that issue of the request by the board to reduce the height ceiling?
Correct, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Sure, no worries.
So yeah, so we maintain that the building is still, the overall height from grade to ridge is still shown at thirty foot, four inches. First floor is nine foot, second floor is eight foot. That allows us to have an attic space, clear attic space of about eight and a half feet, which we felt for storage space, it's a non-havitable space for storage only, would allow for better storage up there. If we drop it down to twenty-eight, it brings that attic space down to six foot six, gives us a less clearance area. Also, I felt it was better proportionally elevation-wise with the roof being at an eight-on-twelve pitch instead of a six-on-twelve. It gives a much better street appearance of the house. So that's why we kept it at the thirty foot, four inches. Knowing that the allowable was thirty-five, we're still below the allowable, but not at the twenty-eight.
Um, also, uh, correct me if I'm wrong and perhaps Leanna can also speak to this since, um, since, uh, your father is the guy that's gonna be building the house for you. Um, it's my understanding that the hope was to also incorporate the heating, uh, unit for the second floor up there and that if the, if the height of the attic is reduced, that will create significant, uh, issues with respect to placing the furnace, the heating, uh, furnace for the second floor in the attic part. Is that accurate, Leanna?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
My, my only concern is again, again, this is a undersized lot. It's half the size. So you gotta understand the ordinance is created for a lot that's intended to be ten thousand square feet. So although you comply with the ordinance, is the fact that this is a lot that's half the size, there were some concerns about the height due to the fact that the lot is smaller, that there's also some modest homes adjacent to this property. So I, I believe the, the height issue was again, one of light air and open space that's been brought up by Mr. Patterson's testimony. But I think it's the township's feeling is that that will help with the light air and open space and help to not overpower the adjacent properties or the home, the modest homes on the adjacent properties for that reason. Cause it's, it's a, it's a tight lot sandwiched between two conforming lots with modest homes on it. So I, I understand that the preference may be to put the heating unit in the attic. It probably still can at six and a half feet. Um, I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be able to. Uh, everything would remain the same other than the, the really, the, the pitch of the roof. Uh, aesthetically, I agree, would probably be a little bit more attractive at a, at a steeper pitch. But I'll leave it up to the board. I know in the past, uh, there's been concerns about, um, homes being put in on oversized lots and, and an effort made to, to keep that height, um, you know, at a, at a range where it's, it's not over, overbearing on the adjacent properties. So, um, again, I don't know if this house is going to have a basement, if it's a slab. So, um, you know, there may be some other options with the, with the, the furnace or the, the, you know, the utilities. But, um, I still think even at six and a half feet, um, you have adequate space to put a, uh, a unit, um, in there. Uh, you just may not be able to, you know, I mean, eight feet, you know, would be quite, quite a height you could stand in that. Uh, you may have to crouch a little bit in some areas of the attic, but I, I think it's still a functioning attic at, at that twenty-eight foot height. Um, you know, and at six to twelve isn't an unreasonable roof pitch.
Thank you, Henry. Ms. Westlake, I think this might be the line in the sand. I mean, if you want to speak to your client for a minute, but, um, I think we're, I, I can read the, um, temperature of the board and we probably, uh, have to hold hard with this twenty-eight feet.
No, I, uh, greatly appreciate that opportunity. Um, and my client has indicated that if it's absolutely, uh, a necessity and it would result in a denial in the absence of the, um, reduction in the height, um, they will agree to that. It's, um, it, you know, it's not their preference and their concern is...
Understood.
Is, is, I mean, in the event that someone comes and buys the two adjacent lots and builds a thirty-five-foot house, then they're gonna be overwhelmed. So hopefully the board is thinking in mind.
Come up though. We, I can appreciate that point, but that's an area that we can't address tonight.
And what we, what we might be able to do instead of holding that, I think, um, Mr. Rodeck, you said the height right now is proposed at thirty feet, four inches?
Thirty foot, four inches.
I mean, we, we could just say it'll come down two feet, uh, twenty-eight, four or, or less than twenty-nine. And if that, that helps a little bit, you know, I don't know. I mean, you're, you're talking about roof pitches, so everything sort of works in sort of more whole numbers, I think. But, uh, you know, maybe you can get it. I think it's, as long as it's under twenty-nine, we could, we could compromise to that number. And then I'll let you guys work that out, you know?
I think we can probably work that out. Um, presumably that would be something that, um, could be worked out at the construction plan level based on a resolution conditioned upon, uh, you know, less twenty-nine feet or less type of thing.
Okay.
Just finally, Jim, I have a question for Mr. Caneley. Uh, Jim, I understand the testimony was this property has been for sale and, and nobody's purchased it, but is it still, I think, required that they actually specifically write a letter to each adjoining property owner and show that, that they did, you know, put this out there to the adjacent homeowners? You know, perhaps they didn't know the property was on sale. Perhaps it was just on Zillow and they didn't know. Maybe there wasn't a sign. I, I don't know. But I don't know with, what the law, you know, is on that.
There were, there were signs.
The testimony that's been provided or letters were provided regarding that.
Ordinarily, when you're looking to sell or buy a piece of adjoining property, letters are sent to the adjoining neighbors. In this case, where they were, they, they could not do that because it would make a non-conforming lot. So in this case, they had to offer to sell the property to the adjoining neighbor. And by marketing it on the open market, placing signs on the property and not receiving a response from either adjoining neighbor, I think they've done what the law required.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board have any questions or comments about the testimony that was being given? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one Chairman.
Okay. Uh, I'd make a motion to approve this, um, application with the, uh, comments that Henry mentioned about the, uh, less than twenty-nine feet. Can I get a second?
I'll take a second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Westlake, we will memorialize this at our next meeting and send a copy to you.
Perfect. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Move on to item number nine, twenty-three dash Z B fifty V. Amir Matowala?
Is Amir Matowala here?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Yes, I'm here.
Sorry, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Name is Amir Mutiwalah. The address is 5266 Foster Street at Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you, can you explain to the board what you're doing here?
I'm trying to add, finish the porch at the back of the property. And I'm at the variance board to grant relief because my lot size is about 9,700 square feet versus a 10,000 square feet required by the township.
Mr. Hinterstein, would you be able to shed some light on this? Oh, this, I'm sorry, I'm reading over the documentation now.
You're muted.
All right, give me a sec there.
Okay, you're, you're good.
I just want to pull up that report here and I believe this is again, you know, existing condition. I looked at this and I really don't think there's any issues with the, the addition remaining as it was previously constructed. I think really this stems from a slightly undersized lot. So there's, there's no, no issues with this application.
Great. Any other members of the board have any questions for this applicant or any comments? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion and I will make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll take it.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Mr. Mottawala, you've been granted an approval by the board. We will memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting and mail that document to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, have a good night.
Good night, bye-bye.
Let's move on to item number 10, 23 dash ZB dash 79V, Jay Si. Is Jay Si present?
Rachel Si is here, I'm his wife.
All right. Could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Where the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Rachel Si, 24 Martin Lane, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you, could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
We're looking to build a fence and we want variance so that we can use the full extent of our property because there's a storm sewer easement on it.
And you understand that if access to that easement is ever required, you would be responsible for the removal and replacement of the fence?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Good. Any other members of the board have any questions for this applicant? Comments, nothing? Okay, I'm going to open the public portion. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the public portion and I make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, somebody just raised their hand. They just took it down, okay, forget it.
I'll still make that motion to approve the application, can I get a second?
I'll take it.
Thanks, please call, call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Ms. Si, you've been granted an approval. We'll memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that document to you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening, then.
Thank you.
Good night.
Let's go on to item number 12, 23 dash ZB dash, is it 82V, Moaz Ali? Is Mr. Ali present?
Yes.
Mr. Ali, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Moaz Ali, that is 61 Chicago Avenue, New Jersey.
Thank you, could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Okay, I, I bought the house with the, with the four-foot fence. So I tried to replace with another fence six foot. But I didn't know I need a permit, so I went to township to apply for a permit. They denied the permit because this is too, I'm too close to the Baltimore Avenue. So I need to do variance for this.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to check with Mr. Hinterstein. Yeah, Henry, could you please go over your site impact?
Yeah, I mean, basically there's one comment here and the fact is that again, this fence was, it was previously a 50% solid, four-foot high fence, it complied with the ordinance. It was located on the property line, which is not a problem. The problem is, is that the resident went and changed the fence to a non-conforming solid six-foot high fence. As you know, we don't allow that. So at that point, they would have applied for the permit or if they would have reached out, we would have told them that they needed a variance. We would have told them basically what's in our report that at a minimum, you know, you got to put that fence approximately, you know, halfway of what that front yard setback is, it is a corner property. And we, we usually work with the residents and try to give them about half or a little bit less than half into that front yard setback with the solid fence of that size. But they just replaced it again without the permit. So again, in, in the spirit of trying to be cooperative, I'm not saying that it has to be moved out of the front yard setback completely, but I think at a minimum it should be moved one section back so that that section of fence along, I believe it's Baltimore, is 15.5 feet from the right-of-way line, which is one section back from where it is now. I believe he wants it where it is now, which is 7.5 feet. My recommendation is remove one section from the side, move that or from the ends, move the fence in eight feet and, and then you have your 15 and a half foot setback, which is still less than half of what we normally would require. Or less than half of what the requirement is for a front yard setback. So I think it's a pretty good compromise in consideration of everything was done without permits and without variances.
Thank you, Henry.
I have a question.
Sure, answer.
Do I, do I able to do a four-foot fence solid and the, the, the two-foot mesh? Two, that's six-foot fence, four-foot, four-foot solid and two-inch, two-foot mesh?
No, it's still a six-foot fence and I would have the same concern. The problem is you're, you're still putting a fence that's less than 50% solid, a six-foot height, pretty, pretty close to that front yard setback and sort of impedes that site corridor of the roadway. So, you know, if you told me you were going to do, you know, maybe a four-foot solid fence, period. But if you want a six-foot fence, regardless of the type of fence, I don't think it hurts to put a, a top one foot of the fence being, you know, mesh or lattice. But my recommendation would be the same, that it should be moved to the 15.5% setback, which is eight feet further back than where it is now.
Okay.
Anybody, anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? Mr. Ali, so you're, you're agreeing with the, the moving of the fence, correct?
Yeah, I got to move the fence once.
Okay, just wanted to get that out of the way. With no other members having any comments, let's open it to the public. Is there anyone in the public that has any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
No one?
I have one more question, sorry.
Show Mr. Ali, please.
Okay, so what is my next step now? So I need to apply for permit or I should remove the fence and apply for the permit or?
You should wait until you get the resolution that we're going to send you. Once you get that, you can go apply for your permit.
Thanks so much.
Okay. No one in the public, Laura?
Correct.
That's correct, okay, close the public portion and I'd make a motion to approve this application.
I'll take it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Ali? And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. We will memorialize the document at our next meeting and send that to you. Once you get that, go down and apply for your permit. Thank you, Ms. Dolly. I think we're done, guys, am I right? What am I up to? We have resolutions. 15. Adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of August 10th, 2023. First resolution is Henry's, this was approved.
We can't hear you, Jim.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka? Regio?
Yes.
Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Daniel Piper, would you vote to approve? Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next is Caroline Born, would you vote to approve? Weissman?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next is GNA Property Development, would you vote to approve? Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next is Dennis Corran, would you vote to approve? Denny Durant, would you vote to approve? Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next is T-Mobile North East, would you vote to approve? Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Finally, Martha Sanders, approve, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions I have this evening. Okay, so item number 16, adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of August 10th, 2023. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So many.
All in favor, say aye? Once again, we're stumbling across the finish line. But thank you all for giving me your time this evening, giving time.
Okay, next meeting, September 28th.
Awesome.
I hope, I hope more of you show up.
Okay, mom.
But thank you, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.